Call a meeting to order. Six oh one. Have your agenda. Approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, corrections? To the amended agenda? There's nothing. Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll move by Eric as our second.
I'll second, George.
Seconded by George. Any further discussion? Point of information on the earlier one Lisa was listed as. Response, she asked that if her snapshot report could be delayed till. Oh, I forget just when. After she gets caught up on some other things and schools get started, so. That. So that was on an earlier version, but it's not on this one, just as a point of information. We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wave or whatever. Those opposed? Are you pro Courtney or opposed? Pro, very good. Motion carried unanimously, so declare it. General public comment. I don't see that we have any general public. Online, is there anyone that you can see, Chris? Any extra ones?
No, I do not see anyone.
Okay. So we have no general public tonight to comment. Consent agenda approval of the minutes of July one. Two thousand two, two thousand twenty. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Move the minutes. Is there a second? I'll second the motion to adopt the minutes. All right. Discussion questions, anyone have any comments or?
Uh, yeah, I was wanted to change. A couple of things. Okay, um, page. Two. Under the superintendent's report. Um, it says, uh, Dr. Chick, and I was hoping we can change that to. Um, Sicarelli and spell his name.
I'll change it to his full name, okay?
Yeah.
I know I just printed that off and I have it in this pile of papers. I'll get there eventually.
There's one more thing when, when you're ready. Yep, page two, under superintendent's report.
Page two, under different what?
Under superintendent's report.
Yeah. You wanted it changed the. That's the name. Completed from Dr. Chick to Chick, okay. The fault, and what was the next one?
Uh, on page five. There's just a. There's just some of those acronyms that we, um. That we kind of agreed to have, you know, um. Spelled out aware grant and vis bit, I guess. I guess anyone, you know, reading these wouldn't know what those were.
Uh, oh, yeah. To, uh. Change that. To actually spell out what the aware grant is. In that, in the beginning of the minutes. Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Those are just minor things. Shana, you can take care of that all right correctly.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sure I can. Figure them out, or Chris can tell me what they mean.
Okay.
I'll work with you, Shana, that's fine.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
All right. All, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your thumb or whatever.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried, so declare it. All right, uh, approval of the warrants, one nineteen and one twenty-one. That are, uh. Were in your packet. Any questions?
I'll move to approve the warrants. One nineteen and one twenty-one.
You'll move the adoption, did you say that, Eric?
Yes.
Okay, someone second?
I'll second, Meredith.
I'll second, and that was. Who seconded that?
That was Meredith.
That was Meredith. Welcome aboard. You're fifty, your last two digits.
Yes, that's me, yes, that's me.
That's you?
Yeah.
Very good. Was there any, any questions on the warrants? I. I'm trying to think, it's probably not this one, it's probably one until we get to next month. Uh, yeah, one twenty-three that's upcoming. You don't have it in front of you. It was, you got emailed a copy of it. I think, I would like to discuss later on in the meeting. How we got into this situation again this year with a sixty thousand dollar buyback. On special ed. I don't know how we get around that, but. That concerns me a little.
Well, I, I emailed, I don't know if you want to wait, we can talk about it, but, um. I, I had the same concern when I went into the office, so.
On one, that's on one twenty-three that's not before us tonight, so. But it won't be till next month, but. Maybe we can get some information about it between now and then. You know, just what happened. How we can work on trying to prevent that in the future. Any further discussion on the warrants? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. I. Motion carried, I so declare it. All right, superintendent's report. Chris?
Sure, okay. Um, the report basically is just centered around the reopening plan that was presented at the JR CSU board meeting. Uh, the past month, uh, myself, the admin team, uh, the different task force. Uh, which comprised a lot of our staff as well. Worked on putting together a plan, and so what we had adopted was a plan which we felt would. Uh, benefits both our students and our staff, uh, this come this fall. And, you know, obviously, we're looking at our current conditions where. Uh, we have a very low incident rate, uh, within our communities. Uh, we walked the buildings, we found that we could, uh, you know, accommodate all of our students and our staff. It still meet all the, uh, recommendations based upon the AOE and Department of Health. We looked at a four-day model, uh, four-day in-person model with a one-day, uh, remote learning, which is on a Wednesday. And the reason why we went with the one-day remote learning was, one, to give it opportunity for our maintenance. Uh, staff, custodial staff, to do a deep cleaning of the building, to take care of projects that they normally wouldn't be able to do during the course of the week. Uh, you know, that's, uh, because on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursday, Fridays, majority of the time during the day will be spent with cleaning of the building. Uh, because they're have to, you know, we, you know, change, clean bathrooms, wiping, you know, the facility down. Uh, and assisting in other capacities, so there are a lot of things that may have, you know, you have an opportunity to take care of. Uh, we also will provide, uh, Wednesday provides us with an opportunity to revisit any sort of procedural or operational issues that we might find. Uh, you know, I know Rick and Liz have been doing a great job working with their, their staff in the buildings and building out a reopening plan. But I also, we also know that in theory, uh, that, you know, as we look at what entering the building or exiting the building or moving between, you know, classes or lunch. Uh, when you get the kids in the building, it looks a little bit different. And so I think by building then that Wednesday, it also allows, uh, gives Rick and Liz some flexibility that they can quickly address and adjust. To make sure that staff and students are safe at all times while they're in the building. Um, you know, there, there is a remote learning option for our staff, uh, from, sorry, for our students. And a remote learning option is one that Lisa, who's on the call, can kind of talk a bit more about, but. It will be done, we're pushing more towards a synchronous model. What we mean by this is we don't expect the kids to sit in front of the computer all day long. Obviously, it'll be, you know, depending on the grade level of students. Where a first grade, you know, uh, student who begins your own learning will look a little bit different than, say, a high school student. What we're looking at is the staff will release a learning menu on Monday. And that menu will provide the, for the parents and students, an opportunity to kind of like a roadmap for what they're going to do over the course of the week. And then, uh, this roadmap will also tell the remote learning students when they should be calling in or, you know, checking in with the, uh, their classmates, their students, so. This is something which we haven't, I'm sorry, there's a, is everyone hearing that background noise? It's a, it's like a loud clicking. I just didn't know if people could mute. This, sorry. Okay, thanks. So, uh, going back to remote learning, as I said, it is something which, it's an option for our students. Uh, you know, Lisa, do you want to talk about a little more on real learning before we move on? Okay.
Sure, good evening, everyone, nice to see you. Um, so we've been working with a task force that has almost thirty staff members on it around instruction technology. Um, talking about what we want remote learning to look like, and we have been using the feedback from. The family and staff surveys that we did earlier this summer, um, to help us to drive some of that decision making, so for. Um, all students, uh, all assignments are going to be delivered through Google Classroom this fall. Um, so one, one place for all families and students to go log on and get all of their assignments for all of their teachers and all of their classes. I'm trying to streamline that process, um, and then, as Chris mentioned, we're going to have a weekly menu that goes out. There's an elementary version and then a secondary version. Um, but all the teachers in one building will be using the same learning menu. So students and families, again, have one document that they need to go to. That has a list of their schedule for the week and also all of their assignments, um, links to different things that they need to, um, be part of, and they can see. Right on that menu, what time they need to log in for each of their classes on each of the days of the week. Again, they won't be logging on for all classes, especially at the elementary level. We, we do not want children sitting in front of screens for that many hours straight, that's not the intention at all. Um, the intention is to have a mini lesson, you know, uh, depending on the age of the children, but roughly ten to fifteen minutes. Where the teacher is presenting new material, doing some review, going over new content. And then releasing the students to do either independent or group, um, activities. So students might watch that mini lesson and then log on to a small group. They might watch that mini lesson and then go work on their own for the rest of the class period to finish an assignment that's been started. Um, at the secondary level, they'll have that opportunity to check in with the teacher live, so if they have questions or need. Additional support with any materials, um, they would access the teacher during that class period, um, whether through chat or raise your hand feature in a Google Meet. Um, one of those interactions that they can let the teacher know that they need to talk to them when they have a minute to chat. Um, so those are some of the pieces where, working as a committee still on. Trying to identify exactly what we think the right balance is between synchronous and asynchronous. Um, it's a challenge because it's different for every family, um, and it's different for every kid, and. We know that no matter what we come up with, um, it's going to be exceptionally challenging for some families and other families. Um, may be concerned about the rigor of it, so we're, we're trying to do our very best to navigate that. And to come up with some clear expectations so that both students, teachers, and families all know what to expect. If you're a second grader, this is approximately how many lessons you should be doing live every week. And approximately how much work you should have at home every week, and if you're a fourth grader or an eighth grader, here's how it should look differently for you. Um, to try and get some clarity for families.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Lisa and her task force, they've done a lot of work with remote learning, that is a. Uh, it's a huge undertaking just to identi-, uh, to address this, uh, because. We will be dealing with remote learning in one capacity or another, uh, throughout the course of this year, whether it be, uh, you know, snow day or emergency day. Uh, we've moved to, may have to move to remote learning, so things will change a little bit, so, but I do want to thank them. Uh, for that, and, uh, as she had said, that things are always evolving, things are always changing. Uh, but the biggest thing is we want to just make sure that our students are receiving a quality education, whether it be in-person or, uh, via the remote or the hybrid, the blend. Uh, the one thing that I particularly like about this model that we've set up is the fact that it does allow for our students to be able to move. Uh, you know, pretty easily between the different scenarios, that if, uh, if we are in a, uh, an in-person, uh, that, you know. This works well for our students, if we would have to move to a full or remote. Uh, let's say the day, like we have a snow day, instead of closing the schools down, we could just move to a full or remote for that day. And not lose a day of instruction, that this, you know, our students wouldn't miss beat. They could just move seamlessly into this, this model. Uh, or if we had to move to, say, a, uh, an alternating day for one reason or another, or another version of a hybrid learning model. So it does give us a lot of flexibility with this. Uh, the question was asked about the four-day, and our goal is to start off the year in that, but we, you know, as soon as we feel comfortable, we would like to move into that five-day in-person. Uh, model, because we do understand that it's, you know, the disruptive nature of, of all of this, not just on, you know, the students, but on, you know, families at home, and. Uh, we look at, you know, jobs, our work, and so our goal is, said, this is where small schools have benefited us, that we can. Get all of our kids in, we can meet all the, the accommodations, modifications, the recommendations that. AOE, Department of Health has put forth in front of us. Um, so our goal is said, once we, we, you know, we have kind of our feet underneath us, that we'd like to move into that five-day model, uh, so we feel safe. Um, the one thing that, uh, the AOE has stressed is that, uh, it will not be myself or the administration. Administration that'll be determining when we move from step one to step two, step three. Which is, the state will actually make that determination. So if, uh, we're starting the year off in step two, when the state feels comfortable, uh, they'll move all the schools into step three. It will not be just a, a one school or another, it'll be the state that'll do that, that will not be our call. Uh, but we, within step two, do have flexibility in terms of how we educate, and they said, we'll start off that four-day and. Uh, with, you know, we feel things are, you know, going well, feel safe, then we can move into a five, the five-day model, uh, we'll be ready to go. Any questions?
I had a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, I guess I'll go ahead, um, as far as the remote learning, how, I mean. Maybe you covered this, but how, how much different will it be to the remote learning that we did at the end of last year?
There'll be some, um, some significant differences, in particular, the Agency of Education has been very clear that we need. Remote learning to be as rigorous as in-person instruction if we want students to participate in it. Um, they are not, in the spring, there were a lot of accommodations, we got to have lower expectations for the amount of proficiencies, the amount of hours, the amount of contact time that students were doing. Um, in that transition, that will not be the case this fall. Um, there are very high expectations from the AOE around attendance for students, what counts as participating. Um, in remote learning, along with the amount of work that they expect students will be doing at home, they, they really want to see it be equivalent to what the kids are doing in school. Um, otherwise, they don't see it as a viable option and something that we can offer, and we know that our families want it, many of them. And we want to make sure that we can do that, so the bar is pretty high. Um, so students and families who are looking to participate remotely should expect to be interacting. Online for the majority of the school day. Um, you know, they'll need to be available during that time and be able to log on for different classes. Participate actively in different activities. Um, it's not a few hours, it's a, it's a full school day, that's the intent.
And along those lines, our goal is not to have a student just watch a live stream school day. Uh, and that, that's, like I said, I have a ten-year-old at home, and I would not want my daughter just to sit at a, a computer and stare at a computer all day. There will be a lot of brain breaks, opportunities for movements, uh, and I think that's the biggest thing is the asynchronous learning activities that can be set up. Because I think of whatever, it doesn't matter what learning environment our kids are in, there has to be a healthy balance between synchronous and asynchronous, uh, learning, so. And that's also, like I said, where teachers will utilize, uh, Google Classroom or another, one of our, uh, platforms that we'll use to lead elementary school.
Um, hi, this is Meredith. Can I ask a question about, um, I just heard that Mill River is not going to, uh, they're going to be online through October. Um, and if we're going, um. If you're saying the state is determining our next move, how, I, I'm not sure how that works, and, um. Because everybody's starting at a different place. Could you just explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so this is part of the, I think, the frustration that you've seen, I think it boiled over with a, a superintendent. Uh, Central Vermont kind of expressed, uh, their frustration with what's going on, but. The state has provided us with guidance and recommendations and basically said, it's local control, it's really entirely up to you, and they, they said this all along, that we have to make decisions. Based on what's best for our communities, uh, and what's going on within our communities, and you're seeing a lot of different models starting to take place. And so like we're, you know, Mill River has chosen a model which they're going full or remote for the first couple of months of school. Others are trying to slowly phase students in, I know down south, they, they're having a model like that. Slate Valley is going in-person, uh, very similar to what we are. We looked at a lot of different models and, you know, so what, within step two, there is a lot of flexibility, Meredith, and I think that's where. Um, you're, you're seeing that flexibility, because they really are promoting the hybrid learning model. And the state really is looking for, you know, it's said that K through five should be, uh, should be in school, so. We looked at the best way to accommodate our, the learning needs of our, our students, and we looked at what we, we could do safely and. Uh, you know, the safety of, well-being of all of our students and staff, and we found that. We could, within step two, still offer a, an in-person, uh, uh, model that would allow for our students to be, be there and, and get a good education.
And so, um, can I just ask?
Sure.
If, um. If, if, uh, let's say. Uh, Proctor is seeing a rise in numbers, is Middletown and Wells going to say, we've got to shut down? I mean, how, how?
No.
We're gonna, uh, thank you.
That's great, that's a great question, Meredith, I think what we, we're, we're not going to, my goal is, within the SU is not to have a blanket, you know, if, if, let's say, if Proctor has an issue. Um, let's say that defined outbreak is like having two or more individuals within, in the building. So if, if Proctors have an issue, but Middletown, uh, is, is fine, then Middletown will stay in, in school. There's no reason to put the whole SU into a, a full or remote learning. Uh, so let's say, conversely, if Middletown, there's an issue, we need to shut Middletown down for the day, because, just say, there might be a staffing issue. Uh, we don't have enough staff members for one reason or another to adequately staff the building for the day. Middletown could go into a full or remote, but all the other schools in the SU would stay with the in-person model, so we have flexibility within the SU to do that. We're really, it's really going to be site-based, uh, decision with that, so.
Anyone else have a question at this point?
Um, this, this is George. Um, i- is there any provision for people who feel that they cannot stay home on Wednesdays? Um, especially for elementary level kids? Um. Is there any provision we're going to do, like maybe a contract with Rutland, um, the group in Rutland? To have the kids go there and do remote learning?
As of right now, no, George, but we're working with some different groups to try to find some, some opportunities. We understand that childcare is, uh, it's a major factor for a lot of our families, so we're looking into what those possibilities might be.
Okay, thank you.
But, but as of right now, no, we don't, we don't have any place, I think a lot of schools are scrambling to find, uh, to find childcare, and I think that's, it's a, we're, we're looking into different possibilities, how we can help. Our students during that, on that day, but that's also, like I said, our goal is not to stay in that four-day model. For a long time, it's once we feel we're, we're in a good place, we can quickly move into the five-day model. Um, because if we're, we're, things are going well in the four-day model, we're having no issues, there's no, there's no reason why we can't move into the five-day model. And so that is my goal, is we start off four days and then as soon as we can, move into the five-day model.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, a couple of questions and comments, uh. I read that what's coming out of AOE, that what model we're in is a school board decision. That's not a supervisor union board decision, that's a Wells Springs Board decision. Uh. I know a lot of work's gone into putting this together, but I, I have some real concerns about remote on Wednesday and what. For a lot of reasons, my reasons are. We have a lot of kids in some of our schools that are on free and reduced lunch, if they aren't in school, they aren't eating. And unless we're talking about providing lunch remotely, and I, a lot of, of special ed services that need to be delivered. And these kids that need to be kept up, that kind of fell through the cracks last spring. Unless we know exactly what's going to happen to them. I would hope. I personally would prefer to see a solid session type schedule on Wednesday, so you could have Wednesday afternoon. I could understand that, but the kids, you could feed them lunch, they could be there, they could do special ed, we could have. A five-day model. You know, you could still go to the remote. Learning if we have to shut down and as a contingency plan, but. Um. I, it may not be a majority of this board to believe this, but I believe we ought to be starting out with five days, and I, I, I don't. I think it's going to be really challenging for a janitor to, that we have, the janitorial staff. To clean the school efficiently and effectively and disinfect everything on Wednesday, deep cleaning, I don't think it's. It's possible for one person to do it. I think we need to put more janitorial help in place, even if it's working second shift every night. To, to do some of this stuff, I realize that's may not be in the budget right now, but I. I think we're asking. People to do something that's going to be almost physically impossible, and I don't want Liz and Rick. Doing janitorial work to supplement the janitors to get this, this job done. You know? Because I know there, there are people, and they'll do it just to make sure it gets done. And. I think we ought to be planning ahead not to allow that. Not to get into that, uh. That's, and the same where we have multiple grades in a room. Uh, we did that and it, it works perfectly all right. In a normal situation, but maybe we ought to be looking at. While this, uh. Situation is going on, that we ought to see if we could get more staff and, and divide those up. Uh. Just for the simple reason that. You could spread them out, you can spread them out more, and we could keep them all in school. Uh. I don't know what everybody else on the board thinks about that, uh. You know, this all came about. It wasn't, was just, AOE hadn't put anything out to speak of at the beginning of July. And here we are, the first of August, and everything's had to have been done in between. And. This is, uh. There's a whole lot of issues that, uh. The board hadn't considered policy-wise on, on what we're going to do. I. I have some concerns about. Um. What's happening, uh. what's happening. Uh, well, we're paying tuition to a high school and we're also paying tuition to Stafford for some of our students that are going, how's that going to work out with their off-day remote? Like a Pultelee student that's in remote learning on Wednesday. Um, and yet they go to Stafford and what's, what's Stafford's thing? Are they, are they, are they going to be running the bus runs to pick those people up?
Yes.
Meet the Stafford bus to go there?
Yes.
How is that? That's on the secondary level, but we're paying for that service. And I just wonder if that's been planned for.
Yeah. So there will be no disruption to Stafford. So if on that Wednesday, it's no different than Mill River who's going full of remote. They still will provide transportation for all their students on those days to attend Stafford.
To Stafford, but what about getting them to the school to go? Is, is if Pultelee is on remote on Wednesday, how are our high school students from Middletown going to get to Pultelee to get the Stafford bus?
We still have a bus contract for Wednesday. So we run the bus service for those students to get them to where they need to be, get the bus to, uh, go to Stafford.
So you're gonna, so the Pultelee's, Forest Valley's going to be running the bus routes in Pultelee just to pick up the Stafford students?
Yes.
And the same for Mill River?
I, I can't speak of what Mill River's plan is. I know they're full of remote, but I'd assume they would have to figure out how they're going to try, get their kids to, uh, to the bus stops to take Stafford's, uh, get the Stafford bus. And I know that the, the RNESU who also is up, up just north of here, uh, also has got to consider some things about how they're going to get their students to Stafford bus as well.
Is Rutland City remote any day or are they all in person?
Uh, they are alternating, have an alternating schedule. So half their kids will be in the building, uh, while half the kids are remote.
So the kids that go to Stafford are going to wind up probably being on remote half the time?
Like, I'm not quite sure what Stafford is going to do with that. I know Rutland City is, that's what they're doing with their students. I don't know if Stafford's going to keep their kids in, uh, on a, you know, everyday basis or not.
Uh, I, I see Rick and Lisa have their hands raised. That was, brought my question to them, um, concerning staffing, um, and to Clarence's idea of putting up the combined classes. We have personnel to do that.
So for, uh, I mean, Clarence brought up some good questions. Uh, just to follow up on the, the lunches for free and reduced, uh, we had an admin meeting last week and we are planning to, uh, provide lunches for remote learners and all students on Wednesday. So, uh, we've got to work out the details, but that will be an option. So make sure everyone gets their meal. Correct me, Chris, but I think I'm correct on that, right?
That's correct. Yes.
That's the plan. Then the custodial, um, one, Middletown Springs, I'm so happy that we have now. Uh, that, so I'm adjusting his schedule to make sure that he's going to be coming later in the morning, probably 10:30, 11 o'clock. Um, so he can better utilize to, uh, have a, a clear sanitizing protocol, plan to go around to, uh, hit the hotspots and then, um, do the, uh, the cleaning afterwards. Now, I, I've cleaned the school many times by myself and, and I think there is time in the day to, to at least start off, that everything can get done. Now, as we get into the winter, I mean, that's a different story, but, uh, I think to start the school year, um, I think we can make it, can make it work. Uh, if not, I'd like to give it a try. I think the staff is really committed to, to try to pull this together.
Uh, we got, at this point, uh, uh, Louis is asked to, uh, uh, if he could call in to take care of the financial pieces. So if there is no objection, let's put this discussion just on hold and go on and get, take care of Louis. Louis is, uh, I believe he's weathering a rainstorm yesterday in the coast of Maine. So he's enjoying himself. Is that, would that be factual, Louis?
That would be factual. It's a lot drier today.
A lot drier today. So the weather's good. So now you're on the phone with us instead of vacationing. Uh, that's, uh, par for the course.
That's correct.
Have to take some harassment.
Keeping myself, I'm sure. Keeping myself focused until after the call.
Uh huh.
Hey, the tropical storm ran right up through Lake Champlain, which is where I am on an island right now. And it was wild last night in a tent.
Are you at Pan Mile?
Actually, I, I'm actually on Burton Island State Park.
Oh.
And we are literally right on the water, about, uh, 20 yards from where I'm sitting. And, uh, the tents were collapsing, people sleeping in lean suits. It was wild.
So hopefully everyone got a copy of my financials in the board packet. Um, so usually I'm the bearer of bad news. I do have some good news today. Uh, so the financials, uh, it should be a one-page summary and then there's, uh, an expense and revenue report attached. So Wells Springs did end the year with a surplus of $182,000. Pretty significant. Uh, a lot of that savings, um, is due to school closure, uh, but that'll definitely help us out in the years to come. Uh, so we had savings in Kelly Services after school program. Uh, we had, um, the special ed assessment refund, some fuel savings, savings and supplies and dues, and all of it just, all of it adds up. Um, and then there was, uh, was transportation and then there was some tuition savings that we didn't quite expect. Uh, we expected some of them, but not all of it. Uh, so we had estimated, uh, a couple of extra students and so the actuals came in a little bit less. So that, I think that's all good news. Um, a few other things that I'll mention. Uh, so it's beginning of the year, we had utilized Wells, uh, maintenance fund, which was $15,000, some, for some Wells repairs projects. Based on where the surplus was and the fact that Wells didn't utilize all of their repairs budget in, in their, in their regular budget line, I moved that money back to the reserve fund. So now that we're, so we're going into next year with that $15,000 reserve fund as well. And we still have the $182,000 surplus. Um, I've built receivables for all of the, um, COVID expenses to date. Each school has a receivable and ranging from $3,000 to about $5,000. Um, so we're hoping to get that all back from the state once the application process comes out. I know there were some emails today, but I have not a chance, chance to read them all. Um, we did not have a lot of COVID expenses, COVID directly related expenses last year. I think of the bulk of our expenses are coming in after July 1st. We're looking at, uh, laptops and a lot of the stuff for social, social distancing in schools, PPE, plexiglass, outdoor tents. So a lot of our main expenses for COVID-related stuff is going to be in FY21. Um, the one thing that this surplus does not include is the SU general fund. Uh, the SU general fund is running a surplus too of approximately, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's about $58,000. Uh, so that'll be discussed at the SU board and the SU board can decide how they want to handle those dollars, whether they want to refund it next year, refund it the following year, or just roll it into the SU budget. Um, so those, that'll be discussed later. Uh, whatever the SU board decides, that could potentially increase your FY20 surplus if they decide to give it back this year. My recommendation would be to give it back in FY21 since we have a, a big enough surplus at this point. Is there any questions I could answer?
Are the, the COVID money that you're talking about that we're scheduled to get a refund on, which, which one is, is that some of both is, is one of them that were budgeted expenses that were already in our budget that they're, uh, replacing that are going to get the offset? Or are they other ones that are true expenses that were beyond what was budgeted? Is that some of both or what?
No. So the money that I mentioned, the three to 5,000, depending on the district. And I think for, for Wells Springs, it was closer to 5,000 because you had a lot of food service expenses for the, the, uh, the supplies for the packing of the, the lunches. Uh, so all of the, the $5,000 for Wells Springs is all unbudgeted expenses that will get, we should get reimbursed for 100% and it will not affect their ed spending amount. Uh, I have not calculated any of the budgeted expenses that we're going to claim yet. I'm still waiting for the application process and some guidance from the state to figure that piece out. Um, once I have those numbers, I will let you know. So that's the piece that if we get money from that, it'll reduce our ed funding. Uh, so, uh, there's no, no positive impact by doing that, except for the state as a whole. Um, so the, the only thing that I've included so far is the unbudgeted expenses that does not affect the ed fund.
Okay. And, uh, the capital improvement fund, the money you put back in that that wasn't utilized? Putting money from the, from the operating budget into a reserve fund, doesn't that have to go before the voters?
Uh, y- y- yes. But so, but what I did was, so we, we came into this year with $15,000 in that reserve fund and we used that money this year to, for some projects at the beginning of the year. I just re-classed it so that we never used it and we, it just came out of the general fund. So we're not, we're not putting new money in. We're just not spending the money we originally planned on spending.
Fine, fine. That's, I just wanted verification on.
And I just thought with the $182,000, that was sufficient. We were better off having that money in the reserve fund. But if the board disagrees, I could always move that back.
No, I, I have no problem with it being moved in there. Technically, we didn't move it. We just loaned it to ourselves and, uh, repaid the loan, basically. Right?
Sure.
Anyone else have any other questions for Louis on the, um, year-end financials? I don't know if you've got the message. I, I left it with one of the clerks on, on their phone, uh, that, uh, I received a payment for being, uh, the chair at the end of the year. That's all it said is chair, uh, payment.
It was the payment, it was the payment for attending the SU meetings.
Okay. Where's the breakdown of, of how that was calculated?
Uh, it would not probably have been included in your, in your paycheck. Um, there was some, I guess I could say miscommunication with how that was being processed. It should be processed quarterly going forward. Um, there's a spreadsheet that's been set up that's been shared with the bookkeepers by, um, Wendy, uh, who, Chris's, uh, administrative assistant. And so as, as attendance is taken at the SU meeting, she's putting that information in and the bookkeeper should be going in quarterly and taking that and paying the three representatives. Um, so it was done at the very beginning of the year and then, uh, it was kind of, uh, it wasn't done for, for one reason or another. I can't really say the exact reason. I don't know. Um, so that was a catch-up for the rest of the year.
Well, yeah, but we, we voted and decided that if more than three people attended the meeting for whatever, the $300 would be divided equally among all the people that attended. Did you get, ever get that message?
Uh, that's not the way we did it. Um, that's not the way I directed them to do it. No. I think we did, we did it based on the three, uh, representatives and then if one of the representatives wasn't there and an alternate was there, then we gave it to the alternate.
Well, if I recall, I don't think we ever had more than three people.
Couple of times we did.
Right.
Where we have a carousel meeting and the other people would stay or ratification meeting or one of those deals. That's when we made the decision to do it that way because it was only, felt it was only fair.
We can go back and look at the attendance records for the last year and make the adjustment in the first quarter.
I believe this was the second one. I think we got one back in, at the end of last year.
You would have gotten one back in, I think, October or something of last year. And then, uh, this, you just received one in July for the, the last nine months.
Okay. Well, I know this is, this was the second one we got.
Yep.
I just couldn't, with, with no, there was no breakdown or anything exactly what it was for. It just said board chair on mine. And I thought that, that something's not scope. So I left a note on that. I wanted an explanation for that.
Yeah. And yours says board chair just because that's your position in, in our accounting software, um, at, at this point. Um, it, it was a new process and there was some hiccups this year with it. Um, and I think we've gotten them straightened out for next year.
Okay. Any other questions for Louis on financial stuff?
Yeah, I did have a question. Um, some of the, um, you know, the warrants, they'll, they'll say COVID on them. Um, and the last time I was in there, I did notice one that didn't say COVID, but the invoice, it said COVID on it. As far as, um, money for the CARES Act. I mean, is that, are you still keeping track of those or?
Yeah. So I've asked both the administrative assistants as well as the bookkeepers, that anytime that something comes across their desk that's COVID-related. Um, last year they were putting it on a tracking spreadsheet. And then at the end of the year, I reviewed that and collected all those invoices to create my receivable. And then for this year, for FY21, we've created all new codes and we've asked all the administrative assistants, um, that if it's anything that's COVID-related to code, to code it directly to those COVID codes. And I've also asked my bookkeepers to make sure that if anything comes across their desk that looks like it's COVID-related, make sure it's coded to those COVID codes. So everything might not say COVID on it, but, uh, depending on what it is, um, for example, like the, the food service supplies type stuff may not say COVID on it. Um, but we caught all of those things. I mean, we, we were, depending on the administrative assistant and the bookkeepers to catch it all. So, um, I believe between the, the two of them, they, they should have caught everything.
Okay, great.
But if there's something specific that you have a question on, just you can shoot me an email with it and I could always double check.
Okay. And, and, um, are we going to talk about that, um, build back, the special ed build back and I guess the second, the second page on, on this as well?
Uh, we can talk about that. We're going to talk about a little bit more at the SU meeting as well. Uh, but those are the list of the build backs. Uh, let me just open that up. So I have it in front of me as well. So these are the disallowed by position for your school. Uh, so it looks like for Perez, we, we budgeted 15% and then the average is coming in at 19%, which is slightly higher, but not too bad. Um, it looks like, I mean, one of them was a lot higher and then a few were lower. And then for teachers, we budgeted 0% for this year and the average came in at 15%. We did increase that budget amount to 5% for FY21. And when we look at FY22, I think we may need to take another look at that and see, uh, if we need to increase that further. I think some of it is, some of it is the duties, uh, that they're doing. Those duties are considered regular ed. Some of it's because they're, um, they're not working with students during certain parts of the day. So that's not special ed. Um, and then I think with the smaller schools, sometimes it's a little harder because there's not as many staff to work with kids. And so sometimes special ed teachers may, um, get assigned to something that's a regular ed. And so that increases their, their special ed disallow. Their special ed disallow.
Any other questions for Louis?
Uh, yeah, so we're. Well, I guess you said you're gonna, we're gonna talk about that, I was just still trying to understand, you know, where that sixty thousand for special ed. Build backs is coming from, is that?
So if you have that sheet in front of you, so like the first para. Thirty-four percent of their time was spent doing regular ed stuff, which means we cannot bill that on the special ed. So we need to take the salary and benefits for that first person and take. Uh, so thirty, we need to take thirty-four percent of their salary and benefits and bill that back to Wells Springs. Now fifteen percent was in the budget, so the difference between thirty-four percent and fifteen percent is our variance, that's what you didn't budget. Um, and that's what's creating that twenty-four thousand dollar uh variance.
Well, so Louis on Middletown Springs, it looks like you have four IAs listed for Middletown Springs, am I correct on that?
Uh, one for Middletown Springs and three for Wells.
So you have Middletown Springs and then it looks like, like three I, uh, three more IAs after that, am I correct on that or?
Uh, so the sheet that I'm looking at, so you should have. Middletown, there's a para, and then you have a well para, another well para and another well para. And then you have a Middletown special ed teacher and then T Wells by teachers.
Alright, so, alright, look at it again, report.
So one was at thirty-four percent over and that goes into the average and, and what would the average be on the others?
Uh, so this is the second page of the report, so if you don't have it in front of you, um, so the, the, the Wells paras. One was at twelve percent, one was at six percent and one was at twenty-four percent. And then for the special ed teachers, which is the biggest variances, we budgeted zero percent in FY twenty, again, we increased that in FY twenty-one. But their, their actuals came in at sixteen percent, ten percent and nineteen percent, for an average of fifteen percent.
Well, I guess my concern is, you know, last year we had forty-eight thousand in special ed build backs. And we had this same conversation that, you know, it, that we thought it would be addressed, but I, again, we. You know, we didn't have school for the last two and a half months and we have more, um. You know, more of a build back coming in and I, I'm still just trying to figure out, you know, like what went wrong, I mean, a- am I? As far as the special ed assessment, aren't, aren't the special, how are, how are they, I mean, they're not, they're supposed to. Aren't they supposed to fill something out, you know, when they see a student provide services, am I correct?
Correct, so they're doing time studies two times a year. The fact that we had a school closure does not affect us at all. So there, they did two time studies, once in the fall and once in, um, I think it was early winter. The state said we can use those time studies prior to COVID to calculate their allowable time. Because if we didn't use those time studies, then this number would be far worse. Um, so they do those time studies based on their schedules. So, and their schedules are being created between a combination of, I believe, their principals and the director of student support services.
Which are, which are based off the IEP, so all the services that, I have to, have to tie right back to the IEP, so, so. And Louis, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong way, but yes, the, the one IA for Middletown Springs. So the IAs is, is tied to, to uh directly IEPs. So, um, that student is helping other students, but those are the allowed time that, that can be billed back. And we only have one special ed IA that's uh, um. And we don't have services, the students require services during recess, so unfortunately, that's. Part of the, the, the conflict or problems with a small school is that at this time, um. There are time that, it's a benefit to the school is not being allowed.
Right, yeah, I understand, you know, having to use, um, I understand that, but again, I don't see how. Not being in school and using the old time study would, would make this worse, I mean.
Because when during COVID, a lot of these paras may not have been working with the students as much as they were when we were in school. So if, if we use the, the, the time that they were doing during COVID, then they may have had. Some, some paras may have had zero allowable time in one day, or fifteen percent or twenty percent. Um, because they weren't working with students as much. All the paras still got paid. But they, some of them were not working with students as much. So if we use their, the actuals post-COVID, this, this build back would be significantly more.
Okay, I just was under the impression that, um, you know, if, you know, if, like us, I guess. Aside from the paras, but like the special educators, if they, for whatever reason, um, didn't meet with. The student that they were supposed to meet, you know, then obviously it wouldn't be documented and, and then that student, you know, didn't get their services. Would we still get billed for that?
So the, the, the time studies are not based on what happens on an individual day, it's based on their schedule. So, things happen on a daily basis that don't always match the schedule, so we, we don't take those into account. So we, it goes off their regulars, regularly, their regular schedule for that day. Um, so they may have a schedule to meet with Johnny at nine o'clock, but if Johnny's not there. They may get assigned to do something else. We don't look at what they were assigned to do that day because Johnny wasn't there, we look at what they were scheduled to do. So based on their schedule, for, say, for teacher number one in Middletown Springs. Sixteen percent of their daily schedule is for non-special ed work.
So are you saying that it would be cheaper for us if we, say Johnny wasn't there and the special ed teacher did not meet with Johnny? Rather than having the special ed teacher do something else, if they did nothing, it would be cheaper for us, is what you're saying?
No, so like the, the time study is not based on what they did that day, it's based on what they were scheduled to do that day. So if they were scheduled to meet with Johnny, then that schedule counts as special ed, even if Johnny wasn't there. So it is important that when the time studies are done, people, there's, there's, there was trainings on how to complete time sheets. That they're doing those time, not their time sheets, their time studies, that they're doing their time studies based on their schedule, not what actually happened that day.
Okay, I think I'm kinda starting to get this, so our assessment is based off this time study. Period, right?
The build back is based on, based back on the time study, yes.
The build back.
Yeah.
If we, if the time study was done and these people were all. Hundred percent uh EIP work. And there was no, no non-special ed work and we hired somebody else to do the, the work. Then there would be no work, that they would, the time study, the fifteen percent wouldn't exist. If it was designed that way, wouldn't exist and that way we wouldn't be in the, uh.
Correct, yeah, I mean, if you, so if you had an IA that was scheduled to do a hundred percent special ed work, then there would be no build back. However, that's not the reality because you're having them do recess duties and lunch duties and before-school duties and after-school duties. Um, same thing with the teachers, or, or they're working with, um, John Doe, who's not a special ed student, but we really need coverage. Uh, for that student between this time and this time and, and, and though may, maybe not all of those occurrences that I just said pertain to Middletown Wells. But they pertain to one of the schools in RSU and so for one reason or another. Sixteen percent of that special ed teacher or fifteen percent of this IAs time is non-special ed. And that, and that's really the, out of the control of Christine, it's more the control of. And, and sometimes it's out of the hands of the principals just because they need coverage, but. Christine hires the people and puts them in the buildings, how they're utilizing the buildings is more the control of the principals. Um, and the master agreement.
Yeah.
So the wages that get used to build the build back and the benefit are the same wages that we would pay if we were hiring somebody else. Right?
The wages that get used are their actual wages.
Their actual wages, so, um, if someone's a, a middle step halfway up. They get that average, that's the, that's the wage against us, where if we hired somebody. Just to do that, it would be an equal wage if they were at the same step level. By hiring somebody else and not having them do anything does not save us any money in the long run.
Well, for example, I mean, for FY twenty-one, we talked about this during budgeting, uh, we put lunch monitors in, in your budget. Because you could hire an IA as a lunch monitor at thirteen dollars an hour. And not having a teacher at forty dollars an hour do your lunch duty and having disallowed time for your teacher. So that's like, that's one of the things that some schools have talked about is having regular ed lunch monitor and not have. Increased special ed time.
Well, we have a position in the budget for, um, someone. For duties, didn't we put that in there?
We put in two lunch monitors, you have one for each school.
And I, I guess, you know, overall, my, my big concern, especially with the remote learning part of it, is that, I mean. How many of these, um, the kids on, that are on IEPs, for whatever reason, you know, um, didn't get their services and yet. You know, we're still paying for it, I guess.
Yep.
Any other questions for Louis? This has been an enlightening discussion on some of this that helps us uh get our head around it, but uh.
But just to reinforce, so the IA at Middletown Springs, her first duty is always the, the IEP students, so. So at this point, that's the only IP I we have, so if we have someone move in, you know, tomorrow, we have. The capacity to, to take that on, or someone moves in half year, um. So that's always the first duty and, and, but she is always helping students and, um. Yeah, that's, that's reality, so.
I already only have one IA, does, if there's only so many services that need to be done. We will talk about this more at the SU meeting to see if there's any other questions.
Well, thank you, I, I cleared up quite a bit for me at least, so, thank you.
Alright, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, Louis.
Bye.
Thanks, Louis.
Good night, Louis.
Good night.
Okay, back to our. Discussion on the superintendent's report and the school opening.
So Clarence, I wanna clarify, so Stafford is offering, uh, giving their students a choice to either be, uh, in person. Or go to full or remote and so the deadline for students to select was actually today. So we should be getting, uh, in contact with Melissa over at Stafford soon, uh, myself, Joe and, uh, Bob and Jay over at West Rutland. Uh, with regards to what our students' choices were and then we can start building out transportation plans for those students based upon. If they chose in person or full or remote, so I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Okay, that, that, that answers one question, but that, that, that raises a, a, another issue and. If someone's in a, in a mechanical course like welding per se. How in hell are they gonna do the re- remote welding, you know, that just.
That, that I can't answer, so. It's a good question, but I could.
Automotive woodworking, metalworking, I don't know, some of the curriculum they, and programs they have now, I'm sure can be very. Successfully taught remotely, I, I wouldn't disagree with that, but, uh. Some of them I, I, I just, that are designed to be hands-on, how they're going to do that remotely, it's just. Surprises me, uh, you know, I can see that they can do half of it remote and half of it in person, but, uh. Uh, I don't know if they got the choice which way to go, that, that, that just makes me wonder how that's gonna work. I.
I do, I do agree with you Clarence, I do know, not that I agree with the answer, but I. I do know that in situations like, um, some nursing programs that are going fully remote, they are being given. Patients on an app on their Chromebooks. And they're responsible to take what they're learning and deal with this patient and it's almost like. You know, they'll get notifications, like your patient's vitals are this, your patient's vitals are that, so they're, they're doing it, it's not the same, it's not hands-on, it's not with a live person. But there are apps that I know that some other schools are using remotely for. Those kinds of things, so I, I would assume that Stafford would be maybe trying to use some of those same programs. Not that, not that I agree that they would get as much out of it, I, I definitely don't, but, but I do know that they have. Programs like that.
I, I believe some things are quite capable can, can be handled that way, but I, I. I believe some other things can't be, you know, and I'm just, so I'm just, uh, wondering what the, what the. What the thing was, and we're paying for all of that.
Right, I, yeah, I agree with you.
I mean, uh, the other thing that, that, I don't know. Uh, Meredith, you were, you were up in the middle of the lake, it's probably a good place to be, uh. The tax bills arrived in our mailboxes today, uh. Needless to say, uh, what we approve for educational spending is now a reality in people's minds. And my particular instance, it's pretty close to twenty percent more than it was last year that I write the checks for. Uh, when you put everything together, um. And we're got s- some people that, some of my constituents are saying, hey, they only taught half a year. What are you paying them for? Now, I don't agree with that answer, but. That's the thing we have to defend, I don't know if anybody else gets those kind of questions, but I'm sure. Um, unfortunately, that's the thinking that's out there. That's another reason why I think that. After-school program, is that going to exist or not?
Yes. Yes, we're still in offer after-school programming, yes. So Clarence, I, I, I think we, we, I, I could, I could speak on behalf of Rick, Liz, Lisa, myself. We all want the five day, that's our ultimate goal, you know, is we want the five day in person and I think the, the model, and this is why you'd said. Couple weeks ago, allows us to give us a couple weeks to kind of just, you know, get the kids in, transition back to school, they've been out of school for a, a while. Uh, and really kind of build out our plans to, to get, to get these kids into a five-day model and I think that's important for us within the first couple of weeks. From a procedural standpoint, because our, our goal is, once we get them in, we wanna keep them in, we don't wanna necessarily rush it back and then have to quote, go to remote. Because we've done something procedurally that we didn't, you know, foresee and it's, so I think, you know, that Wednesday. You know, let's say for the first couple, you know, the two weeks, those two Wednesdays allow Rick and Liz the, the opportunity to address with staff. You know, the, the health and safety of our students and then we can quickly move into that five-day model, like I said, and I said this couple of weeks. My goal is not to stay in this four-day model for a long duration, it's really just to get us in transition and, you know, if things go well, to move us into that five-day. Model and, and that's our ultimate goal and I think, you know, everyone on the admin team would agree with that, uh, as well, so. Uh, you know, cause I think I said, I believe kids, you know, I said, I think we can safely educate kids in school, I think that's, you know, that. Uh, you know, as of today, and I say that as of today because things can change, this is, you know, I mean, and if things change, we will adjust accordingly, you know, cause we're, we're not gonna compromise. The safety and health of our, our students or, or staff. Um, but I, I, I said, I think that's why the, the four-day model, and I completely understand your concerns, they're, they're. Um but I I I said, I think that's why the four day model and I completely understand your concerns, they're validated as as a parent myself. I had the same concerns for my daughter who's on a three days at home, two days going to school. Um model and it it is very intrusive, it's very difficult for us to learn, but. I do know this model will give, I said, Rick and Liz and their staff. The opportunity to build out some plans, make adjustments so they can, we can quickly move to a five day model and safely educate kids and keep them in that five day model. For as long as we possibly can.
I'd like, I'd like to say, this is, I think, an excellent choice because this is extraordinary times. This can turn right around and go south in a moment. And uh by being cautious and moving carefully. We are in the fortunate position that we are in to even be opening schools. We are down to, I think, is it New York is the only large school system in the country opening at this point. Um I I do not, I do not stand by a five day a week model at this time.
And and just to build upon that, there's real anxiety out there by parents and I think having this. This four day and 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 spending this extra time to to get things right. Uh parents do have the option of homeschooling and um I know there's thought. Some people are thinking about doing that and I think that's a, you know, certainly that's a a favorable option, but I want to make sure that we're. We've got a good solid educational platform, there's online learning and we really have. Worked out the the kinks of the details for the safety plan, I have a ten page safety plan with details that more than I. Every time I get into it, it just gets deeper and deeper about safety plans, so um. Yeah, I thi- I I think the four day is a great way to start.
Where do we stand with with the recommendation on. Checking people's temperature before they enter the building or before they get on a bus uh.
That that's still a requirement for us to do, that that'll be part of the the health screen. Whether it be before they get on the bus, we'll have to take the the temperature, there'll be a clearance sheet. Um but they also, the the temperature screen is something we have to do, so we'll be taking.
We got, uh did you have to hire personnel to to travel on the buses? And well.
And Liz, you know.
Well, we're fortunate not to have busing, but uh we've got it, you know, we'll get it worked out with the the screening as we come in because. Uh once again, we we're trying to develop this plan of of spreading people out, so we have actually going to have three entry points. Uh to try to 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 mitigate any chance of spreading, so but I think we've got a pretty good plan in place.
Yeah, I I could see where three different levels there at Middletown, I go, you have the. What, two, two entrances in Wells?
Yep, we have our preschool entrance and we have our main entrance, um you'll see when you pull up too, we're gonna have a. Essentially a carport type plant for kids to stand under as they wait to be checked in, um in regards to the busing, you know, we're. Looking at a bunch of different options, trying to be creative, um and really it's going to depend on. Um you know, what parents choose to do, which we're starting to get some feedback on what parents want and what they think is best for their kid and. My, I'm not at ten pages yet, but it's getting there, um you know, it's been an ex- extensive. Month or.
That that kind of um goes along the question that I have. I'm wondering if either schools have had an indication from parents yet as to what their plans are, like. Do we have a percentage that we know are going to be staying home?
I don't have a percentage yet, um we released our letters to families this past week, so I started to hear from some parents, most of them are just. Questions, what does it really mean for remote learning, you know, um they were just wanting to be in the loop on what we're doing, which we're still. Preparing to get out to everyone, but um I've had a handful of parents that have. Are are leaning towards remote, not a significant percentage per se.
Okay, and do we have any particular grades that might be. An issue as far as numbers, too many in one class?
No, we, that was actually one of the benefits, I think, to walking around with Dr. Chicorelli because I was curious about that, um but we have some. Some um room movements or folks that had smaller spaces to work with kids that we were able to put into some larger spaces. Without interruption, um so we're we're in good shape to be able to take on our larger classes.
And we're in pretty good shape, we had a walk, walk around with Dr. Check today and his wife and uh. No, I think we're in, we're in pretty good shape and going to the question about uh. Indication, so I know of one parent that's thinking about remote learning. Uh I did have a parent that was saying they're saying that they were going to homeschool, but I had to go and. Clarification about the letter that was sent out, we and as administrators, we all sent out pretty much the same letter, so. Just clarification about what remote learning look looks looks like and it's not going to be on. Um Google Classroom all day and I think that was the concern of of the remote learning, so I actually sent a letter out, all the parents to clarify that. Uh we understand and and uh this remote learning really should be a lot of student directed learning, which is. One of the ultimate goals we should be doing anyway, so um that's the probably the exciting thing that will probably come out of this, if done correctly.
I'm uh I'm not so much opposed to remote learning as I I worry about. Uh one end of the spectrum of our student body that. Might not have the the same parental concern and the parental supervision and the. Uh guidance that they need to be on task, you know, uh uh when. Mom and dad have to go to work. Or or one or the other, just to keep the food on the table and the rent paid, uh. Uh childcare on and getting things done or or uh. Uh sometimes get a get a a secondary uh. I I I don't believe it's not because they don't care, I just, it's because they just don't have the uh uh ability to. Deal with it right now, so I am glad to hear that we we still have the after school programs. We still have uh and we'll we'll be headed back to five days as as it works as possible. I I do, I I am real serious about uh. I think we we really might need want to look into more. Janitorial help to really, because the disinfecting of these schools is going to be. Had a uh paramount to preventing anything from spreading if we get anything. And it could very well help with the seasonal flu that we all would deal with every year if we can uh uh. Do more of that, it's Rick assured me, they can do it, but I. Uh I would not be opposed to finding some extra help if we can.
Clarence, I'm sorry, Clarence, go on, I apologize.
No.
With regards to the the maintenance, one of the the things we discussed was uh we look at the Wednesdays. Is we have to adopt more of an SU wide approach to certain things and while we know that. As we look at our our maintenance staff or custodial staff, that's, you know, like I said, you know, one, one person, one building. We can easily shift or reallocate individuals to assist in that deep clean, like say. A a maintenance, a custodial member could come from Proctor down to uh to work with Rick or Liz's, you know, individuals and and. And knock it off in twice a time, you know, or bring in the spray gun that they may have. So we understand that we have to kind of pitch in to help each other out, that it's not going to be just kind of left on hold, that we really have this. This kind of a SU wide approach to making sure our schools are clean, are safe for our students and 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 that's one of the flex. Yeah, the flexible options of Wednesday is on those days. That a uh a maintenance individual could move around, shift around from building to building to assist with that deep clean. And then as we begin that mi- that mindset, that process, that we really um continue that throughout the course of the year because. We're going to be dealing with this throughout the course of this year, we we understand that, we all know that. Um and we we so to order help out, it's Rick and Liz and they said their staff. Our goal really is to kind of shift and reallocate resource or resources to assist with that process. So and that'll help sometimes even offset some costs too, so we won't just be, you know, relying on one person to hire. Uh or to add more to their budget that if we have two or three individuals at another building. Uh that we can move, shift one over to assist on on a Wednesday or on another day for a deep clean. But we we have discussed that and that's something which I think we want to do because I think we have a great admin team, I think we have a great teaching staff. Who really works well together and I think this is a time where we we really do have to pitch in and help each other out, uh it it's 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 vital. If it is going to work, we all have to work together on this, we can't just, you know, leave it up to, well, just hiring or, you know, other extra individuals, I think this is a perfect example of that.
I, my, my concern is. I know our building principals will make it happen, whatever needs to be done.
Yep.
But. We should not put force them into a situation where they have to, they're down where they have to do this work. Not that it's beneath them, they have plenty to do as it is, we can burn them out without without even trying.
I I I agree Clarence, I think, you know, most staff members, you know, administrators, you know, I had no problem picking up a mop. You know, picking up trash at Proctor, I think that's part of that mentality, it's just, it's, we all pitch in, we all help out and while it's not an expectation, I I do believe that. We all have that mentality here that we we're do whatever we can to make this work, just, you know, on a normal year and and and. Crazy year like this is going to be, we are going to help out, so I I do understand exactly what you're saying, but uh. But I think that's one where it's not that Rick or Liz ever feel they have to. Uh but like I said, we'll provide resources, you know, to make sure that they're not kind of stuck in a bind because the last thing we want is. For to Rick or Liz to ever feel as if their students or staff walking back in the building that is, hasn't been cleaned as well as it should have been because. Uh just, you know, because of time or because of other constraints and we have, we can reallocate resources to assist them with that, so. Every morning with it, you know, students and staff walking in the building, there is that peace of mind knowing that that building has been deep cleaned and is ready to go.
Okay, well, uh I I I guess. I I'd like to kind of encapsulate this discussion is. This board just likes to know what's going on about everything, we don't really. Want to micromanage, but we do, we do want to know what's going on in our communities and and everything. That's going, so uh if we. And I challenge you about things, I take our responsibilities as a board. Uh to to make these decisions and be in the know very, very seriously. And I think every everybody else does and they, we all act with the um. Important for the students that we represent, so um. There's no further questions on the superintendent's.
I wanted to bring up something, well, first I just wanted to say I like the idea of sharing resources rather than just hiring new people, you know, but um. Uh I would just wanted to bring something up, um about transportation. Uh with some of our secondary schools now, with the change to Wednesdays, um. I don't know if you're aware that Gran- Granville sends a bus to Wells. And um changing it from Tuesdays to Wednesdays. Are they aware of that? Um and I don't even know if um, I mean, I would assume that they're still going to be sending a bus. Um like they did last year to Wells to pick up students, but uh you know, you know, like where do we go from here, I mean, is that something that. You might be able to reach out and find out. Uh and I mean, also there's the Long Trail students. Where the bus stops um to pick up uh kids from Wells on the way, will they still be doing that? Um I think uh, you know, this would be a good time to figure that out, um.
Long Trail won't be running a bus for the first few weeks, they haven't figured out how to do it yet.
Okay, so I mean, parents should probably know that if they don't, you know.
They would know it from Long Trail.
I know with uh with Granville, um they're looking to see if um parents would be willing to. Transport and um and pick up students from school. Uh you know, because they're having difficulties uh meeting the um the requirements. But again, I don't know if that applies to the bus they send to Wells, as far as I know. Um it just uh comes to the school and then goes to Granville, um so uh. Yeah.
Well, I can tell you because that was one of my bigger concerns back in July when we were thinking about, now we're talking state lines and we all have different. Health expectations at that point and um I've kind of, in all completely honestly, was really focusing on the Poltoni transportation at this point. Um but I was advised that, you know, health screenings are going to be health screenings on the bus, so those kids who coming. That stand out beside and wait for the bus would still be expected to follow the health expectations of. That we put in place and would um would be allowed to stand there waiting for the bus. For social with, you know, social distancing, so it's not that we can't do it, we just. I have to, I have to get to the point where we are articulating the expectations, um and that's just another layer of where I'm at in the process.
Okay, yeah, I just, my concern is that there's no surprises, you know, where no bus from Granville shows up and they say, well. Like it was two years ago, oh, we didn't know, um and uh. And so, you know, we had to pay for transportation for a couple of months, but um. And there's no surprises to parents, um especially where it comes to picking up and dropping off their kids and if they do. If they do, um if they are doing transportation, they're still not going to drop students off on our. Um. Professional development days, so there's no bus service, so if they have school. Um. On Wednesday, and obviously we don't, um. So um how are our students going to get to Wells, uh I think you said earlier that. I don't know if the buses would still take, pick up students and drop them off at Wells for a Granville bus. And um if the Granville bus comes to Wells to pick them up, they're not going to drop them off on Wednesday. Because nobody is technically there to see them off the bus, the same as it was last year.
I don't know, what is West Rutland going to be running the bus to Middletown this year?
I I would have to ask uh Jay over at West Rutland, I'm not quite sure, I can get back.
They were, I don't know if, do we have any secondary students going to West Rutland now, Rick, you know?
Uh I am not sure on that one.
Because they, I believe that. They were going on the, Mill River was contracting. With their bus, it was the same Bet you transit, so they took them both and he joined up with. He dropped them off for the. I don't know just what they did, but somehow the, he made the the connection work to West Rutland and. And that because we, we don't provide any secondary transportation in any way other than the. The receiving schools of all have their own pickup, just like Poltoni came to town. West Rutland did, Mill River, the Mill River bus, but uh I don't know who. Whether we had anybody in West Rutland still or not, occasionally we do so, I don't know what.
I thought we'd still have one family uh in West Rutland, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I thought so.
I, I believe so, so.
You could be correct, I I'm drawing a blank.
Okay, uh that that'll be an issue with Granville, uh you know, and and. And and them, uh but we told them that. We weren't doing secondary transportation other than. If the Wells bus is going by, they they're more than welcome to ride. Um you know, because of, you can't, can't do for one group and not the other. So that was where that stood, but that's, hopefully Liz can get that worked out to. Everyone's satisfaction, any other questions?
Um just for Rick and maybe uh Liz a little bit. Uh do you guys have enough parent drop offs in the morning where you might have to give them assigned drop off times? To make it easier to check the students in?
At this point in time, I think we're okay, we're still going to have early morning arrival and we have, got a protocol for that. And then with the pre K coming in separately and. I think we're going to be all set. I think we're going to be all set.
Okay.
Most of ours ride the bus, um, so they'll come with the pre most, we're hoping come with the pre screened piece to that. So we're moving them through faster, um, but at this point, we don't have to adjust for any alternate start times.
Okay, thank you.
Worst comes to worst, you can split up the arrival times in the morning, change them if you have to. So, alright, any other questions? Dot, the principals reports, uh, they're pretty much self explanatory. Rick and uh. Elizabeth, uh, if you each want to make a comment or whatever, go ahead.
I don't know what else to say other than reopening is pretty much taking over everything in a good in which it should be. So uh, uh, a lot of thoughts gone into this and and I want to say great collaboration with the teachers on the developing the uh, the remote learning. Kudos and uh.
Yeah, and uh, just going back to the uh, the student directed learning, if nothing else out of this, I think it really does force us to. To create learning that's engaging for the student, not that we didn't do it before, but but it's even more important with the remote learning. You've got to have a hook with the kids and they've got to have a buy in and a connection to it, so. Now, we've been going in that direction, so I think this is leaving pushes more in that direction. To have it to make remote learning be successful. And just to follow up on the uh, the details, so we can get rid of the main line, which is all the phones, but we still have to keep it. Um, the other lines for the facts, the alarm system and uh, I think there's one more, so.
Okay. I had one question that I just thought, do we have? Any indication from any staff that they aren't going to be able to do in person learning because they're fear for the health and safety?
At this point in time, um. I've checked with anybody with everybody, I I don't see at this point, but. You know, there's still is certainly time to for for a change, uh, if there was someone making decisions, so.
Okay, I just wondered if we, I mean. If something was real definite, we'd probably need to do it in a different session, but I just was. Curious where we stood there. Alright, Liz, do you have anything more you'd like to add?
I would just like to again say that it's been an interesting month, learned a lot, and I actually really appreciate walking around the building and thinking about reengineering it. Um. I I really, I feel confident about what we've put together so far and I think um, the staff is feeling really good. We have a question and answer document that they go in and just kind of core dump some things and then I'm able to process it with them. So we're not sitting um, for weeks without answers. So just really appreciative of their level of commitment to walk through this process with us even though they weren't physically in the building. Walking that and really looking forward to welcoming them back over the next few weeks. Coming back.
Okay. I wish uh. Both of you a very fine and enjoyable Labor Day. As you don't won't be in school yet. Uh, so enjoy your last holiday of summer uh, immensely. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have I have uh, some questions Clarence.
You have what?
Questions for the principals.
Oh.
Okay, uh, Liz, um, that email that was sent out, was that the reopening plan for Wells?
One that was sent on Friday from, it came from McKenzie.
Yeah.
That was the the letter that was very similar amongst the district, we all sent out a letter there, we are still working on exact details of some of the different levels of the reopening plan. Um, so that's that's the forthcoming.
Okay, I thought the reopening plans were going to be out by August 1st, but um, that's why I asked. And I I guess uh, an important question that I had is how is the mask situation going to work? Do the kids get new masks every day? And um, you know, I mean, is it, are they like those blue disposable ones that you see everyone wearing or like how exactly is that going to work? I mean.
So the plan for Middletown Springs is volunteer made mask and we're going to have two per child and uh. We're going to wash them at night, each classroom is going to have a like a nylon mesh bag and and wash them. Uh, students will have to take one home with them and uh. We'll have to have backups because I I know some kids are going to show up with it, but we're going to try to reuse, um, try to use reusable. I probably the same for Wells too.
We have a similar plan, we had a lot of people reach out and want to make them, so we're waiting to see what we get and we're hopeful to do like a drive through, pick up your mask. Somebody is we can afford to hand off to you, um, with the same understanding that they're going home and we backup them by.
Is there any concern with uh, you know, accepting these masks? Um, you know, from from other people, you know, from outside homes and then giving them to students, I mean.
I I think I would wash them first, but I I really don't.
Wash.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if you're not worried, I'm not worried, I guess.
The nurse, uh, uh, Nurse Jackie, Nurse Becker is uh, was very confident and it's a great option of homemade, so.
Okay, yeah, so I have a list here, um, so, uh, and then I wanted to ask about, um. It is something I wanted to ask earlier in the year, but uh, enrollment. For this year, I know I read somewhere that um, homeschooling is up. In Vermont, but I just was just curious how the enrollment is looking so far for.
Right now, it's it's holding, we've gained a few students, uh. I've only heard of one student homeschooling, but I think at once the parent had clarification of what remote learning really is going to be, I. I think we're. I think we're holding.
Okay.
Yeah, we're holding as well.
Alright.
And then for Liz, the, could you, um, the energy efficiency grant?
We have, we were um, all encouraged to go through this process at the state and actually I was working with Control Tech. Um, so Kevin, Austin and I met a week or two ago now. Um, and actually looked at the audit that he came and did with his um, technician in the fall. And um, Lewis had asked us to rank our uh, HVAC systems by priority and we were priority one and I has escaped me what the qualifications were to be priority one. But um, so I've been working with Cheryl Graves um, from the state, trying to figure out. Um, the process next, Kevin is supposed to be putting together the um, the grant proposal itself and then I'm getting that off to Cheryl. Um, and the hope is that we are awarded the entire system upgrade that he had recommended and picked away at over the next few years. Um, and we had put in for um, a couple of the negative air pressure units um, to to put throughout the school. So I'm hopeful that um, we get a lot of that work done and it's supposed to be done by December, um, end of December with the grant, so short turnaround um, for us.
And is this to meet the HVAC requirements for the for the COVID regulations?
Um, we are able to open, we we meet all of that, it was they were, there was an abundance of money, I think it was like six and a half million dollars. Um, and that they were able to give to the schools in the state. And there was some qualifications you had to to meet in order to to move through with them. So I've been communicating with her a couple of times over the last few weeks, um, and I'm just really at this point just waiting for Kevin to get me the proposal to give off to them. And schedule as we go through.
Okay, great, and and then for Rick, um. What? Maybe you can just explain really quick, I I I just, I don't know what Houghton. Mifflin's, I don't know what that is.
Oh, Houghton Mifflin, so, uh, how, I I may not have spelled it correctly, I think I did, but it's Houghton Mifflin. So it's the the reading program, math program, math and focus. So Middletown Springs are and Wells are looking, we both have math and focus and we have the Journeys reading program. Uh, they have an upgrade that has uh, online material, teacher interactive, student interactive. And uh, a lot of great online resources, so we're looking at uh. Um, upgrading to the to the uh, the next level or the most recent addition and uh. It makes a lot of sense, especially if, you know, if we do have to shut school down and everything's online, books don't have to go home and. So and it's been a great, um, fully endorse the the reading program, that's, I I give it credit to one of the reasons why we've done so well on. On aspect reading and I think the math program is really good too.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you and and um, I I think uh, you guys are doing fantastic, uh, so again, I'll reiterate the. Good luck and, you know, hopefully things uh. Continue to to improve.
Okay.
Hope for the best, so.
Yep, thank you.
We have a motion for the consent agenda.
Cards to the masks. Will the, um, will we be allowing the kids to remove those at any point if they're at their desks and they're socially distanced? Or will they be expected to have them on during the entire class time or has that been kind of decided?
Uh, so part of what we walked around and talked to Dr. Turelli about was getting outside as much as possible. So while the weather is nice, that's really the push and the plan, um, is to set up spaces outside for kids. And, you know, there'll be opportunities, we'll have to build in, you know, mask breaks where it is that we're going outside and we're able to go to distance. Um, I think it's going to be an ever evolving process. Um, that we're just going to continue to use those Wednesdays to sit and brainstorm and and work through.
That's pretty much what uh, Doc, Dr. Check said today, really, the reality is especially the youngest students, uh, you've got to build those times to. To um, take those masks off and uh, build up the capacity for the kids to to uh, wear it.
Does that answer your question Amanda?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Eric, it's her second.
I'll second, it's Amanda.
Seconded by Amanda, any discussion or questions? Not all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried, so declare it. We did the finance uh, with the the Ed Fund update, he didn't really get into, he did the year end summary. My understanding is the. The Ed Fund is still still have problems, but they don't know how much backfill there's going to be as a result of budgeted. Budgeted COLOVUS expenses that are going to switch both ways are going to be backfilling the Ed Fund. Somehow. The state wound up the end the year with a surplus instead of a deficit was that they'd all been figuring on. So what's going to happen to us in August? I don't know, uh. But you, have you read any out more about this Ed Fund update, George?
I I I have not Clarence.
Um, we. I have an executive committee meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock that they'll probably, I'll get some more updated information. It's not going to do us a great deal of good until the first of September when we get together next time, so.
Yeah, and and I know the state had say says they have a surplus, but where is that surplus going to go is the question.
Yeah, so uh, we'll, and there's an election in between, so uh, we'll go from there.
How did they have a surplus?
They had more revenues come in than they anticipated, they anticipated everything was going to that was shut down, there would be no rooms and meals, no. Sales tax, none of this, all these splinter taxes and the income tax that people were paying in. They underestimated the amount that they were going to get. Uh, it's my understanding from the press conference of the governors where I got the information that we wound up with a surplus and we were planning on a deficit. You know.
I mean, they actually be that that extended unemployment and the extra $600 really did some good.
Yeah, it got right back into the economy, that's why it was spent more than they uh, anticipated, I guess. Any little, any little bit will help the the Ed Fund and our challenges for ongoing years, so. Um, we'll move on to personnel, we have uh. Resignations, uh. I don't think I saw any resignations.
Uh, there was one.
I I don't have any resignations.
Yeah, I didn't think so, that's a carryover from the previous agenda.
Just a FYI from Middletown Springs, Holly Crandall and Kaylee Crandall, who Holly Crandall especially has done the after school program. Well, I'm, I've been here for 10 years, has decided not to come back next year because of COVID, so. So that ad is is going to be put on to for after school program. So hopefully we can find find some uh, good staff for it.
Okay. Alright, we have uh. Uh, resignations, we have non-union contracts. Recommendations. These are all uh. I believe all the contracts that we said we were to hold off until August on when we knew where we stood with the negotiations, uh. And uh. We still don't have the answer yet. Um, what's going on with the negotiations, so. I don't know, what's the pleasure of the board of these non-union contracts at this point?
Well, I'll move to.
Table until September?
No, um. Approve the contract recommendations.
Their second to the motion.
Um, do we know what the percentages is uh, of these raises is about?
Well, once someone seconds that, we can discuss it.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by George, motion made by Eric, seconded by George to approve the contract recommendations. I believe the uh, McKenzie Gates is 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 uh, is the 3% that was put in the budget, I believe. That that's what that number is. Uh, the other numbers, the Tammy and the $25 an hour. Shawna, is that 25 an increase or is that what you're getting currently?
That's what I'm getting currently.
Okay.
I think they're all current numbers listed there.
I thought it was a stipend.
What?
For a recording secretary.
No, no. It's uh, that was an hour, she was hired at an hourly rate when Deborah hired her for.
Okay.
For, that's what she does, the SU and she does us too, um.
Everybody.
Well, I mean, here's here's my thought, I know we basically tabled this uh, because of um. The SU um, decision to do the same, uh, but you know, with, you know, school starting and um, in about a month. Um, I guess my concern is is that, um, you know. And I don't know, uh, maybe the um, principals might be able to. Speak on it, but you know, my concern is that, you know, some people might just move on, you know, not having an an answer. Or or at least something. And I am, you know, I think that um, you know, we asked, we asked uh. People to wait and then in, um, and um, again, till August. So I think we should at least discuss it. Um, I know it's already been, it's in the budget, so I don't see, in my opinion. Why we wouldn't and I just have one question though. I'm assuming athletics is off the table for this year, correct?
Uh, not yet, no, we we were supposed to really receive some word last week and then they pushed it off till it's supposed to be Tuesday and then hopefully it'll be uh, this Friday. That we'll learn a little bit more about it, so Governor Scott. That we'll learn a little bit more about it. So Governor Scott has kind of taken that over. He put together his own task force, so. Um, and the, the sentiment is that there'll be athletics in some form or another this year.
Okay. And, and that was my thought. If, if we're not having athletics, then we don't need a athletic scheduler, um.
Uh, okay, with the, the motion's on the floor to, to, uh, to approve these contract recommendations. Well, these are current non-union contracts for increased consideration. They're, they're put out here to see if we want to increase these, by anything. These are the, these are current wages that they're talking about. Uh, what's anybody else's feelings? We had a carousel meeting the other night, an executive session, so we can't really, say too much about what, when I'm there, without we go into executive session.
Yeah.
But it plays along with some of this stuff.
Should we save this for executive session, maybe?
Um, I would think we should. But we can't. The motion's to approve these contracts, so that's, that's what's on the table. So we either got to vote that down at this time, or...
You should be able to table it.
Consider this, it's like, more like the tableless until after we've had a discussion in executive session. Does that make sense?
I have a motion to table.
We'll table it by consensus, and then we can come back to this motion that's on the floor. It's not work for everybody. Table, the table takes precedent, so all those in favor of tabling, say, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
You, you're opposed or in favor, Eric Meredith?
I'm in favor of tabling.
Okay, I, the vote came in in the middle of the, the discussion, so I was trying to just make sure. Okay, so, we'll skip, we'll skip by that. Let's, let's continue on with the agenda and see how much we can get done here. Um, new hires, uh, the, the new hires are food service assistant in Wells and a pre-K at Wells.
So Clarence, that pre-K should be crossed off, correct, Rick? Uh, I do believe that, that pre-K para...
Ryan the Shell?
Yeah, did not accept the offer, so we can, we can cross that.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And, uh, so all we have is the, uh, Crawford for...
Crawford, yes.
For food service in Wells. Alright, we have a motion to, uh, approve that, food service person. Whatever, however you pronounce the first name. I'll give that to Liz. Who is that?
Her name is Janiqua Crawford.
It's what?
Janiqua.
Jenny?
Janiqua.
Janiqua.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I'll move that we approve that, uh, position for, uh, the 1385 per hour. That's on the contract scale.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Not all of us in favor, say aye.
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 Motion's carried, I so declare it. Alright, um, Chris, you have a Wells property transfer update?
Uh, I wish I had a, more of an update for you, but, uh, I've reached out numerous times to Jack, uh, Facy, and I've not heard back from, him as of yet. So the,
Okay.
Last we had heard was, he was just waiting to contact John, uh, Thrasher, uh, and that's supposed to be at the start of the month in July, and except we've not heard from Jack, so, uh, hopefully we'll hear back from him soon, cause I guess that's the last thing that they're supposed to do is just, contact John and then get it drawn up, and then that's it, so we're almost there, I guess.
Stop over and thump him at his office.
Okay.
Uh, alright, uh, new business community health update? We have a...
Yeah, it just, I'll, I'll be real quick. This is something which, uh, Meredith, and thank you for bringing that to, to our attention. So I've had an opportunity to meet with representatives from community health, uh, twice now in the past month, uh, today most recently. And what they're going to do is put together a presentation, uh, for the next board meeting, uh, in terms of what a telehealth may look like within our schools. And their, suggestion obviously is to start small in terms of a couple of schools, and I feel that, um, you know, you know, Middletown and, and Wells would be a great place for us to, kind of run some, uh, these, these pilot programs. One, obviously because Meredith brought to our attention, so, and two, I think that it, it'd just be a good place to, to do it, to, particularly with the, the new nurse there. Um, I think she's done a fantastic job thus far, so it, it's, we'll have a presentation for you, which will kind of outline how telehealth would work. Um, I'm waiting here about if there is a cost or what that cost might be, uh, but, uh, they're saying that they will, like, loan the equipment to us. Uh, we will not have to purchase equipment to use within the schools. Um, but, uh, they'll kind of go through the whole process with us. I, I did reach out to Brooke Olson Farrell over at Slate Valley, and she could not, uh, I guess, speak higher, I mean, she, she spoke nothing but praise for this program at, uh, Slate Valley, so. It sounds like it's a, uh, a, a very good program that if we can, take advantage of this and bring this in, I think both our, our students, our community would benefit from this.
Okay. So we'll put that on the agenda for a fixed time in the next agenda to get, get started.
Yes.
Um, that works. What, Chris will coordinate that. Um, we have any action on policies? None are proposed right at the present time. Um, we have some recommended policies that are coming down that we ought to look at maybe for the next meeting. We'll see what they, what they look like. Um.
Chris, when does the policy, GRC SU Policy Committee meet?
It's a good question.
Good question, Eric.
So, um, I will, I will look into that, and I'll get back to you with the answer out, okay?
You're on the policy committee, I, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because, did you see the two new policies that, uh, that, uh, League School Boards Association got vetted and they're putting out? I just saw that they exist, but I didn't print them off yet, so.
I, I saw the email, Clarence. I haven't, I haven't read them yet.
What was the equity policy, correct?
One more, one more tree to kill. So.
It's still dead, yeah.
Well, you know, there's, I don't know how, maybe they aren't that long, but, but, that, uh, the future meeting date, the agenda items is, uh, September 2nd, uh, they, uh, that's before school starts with the delayed start of school at the 8th. Um, if we're gonna have this community health presentation, we probably, um, ought to break Assistant Superintendent's heart and, uh, put this, uh, uh, annual snap, snapshot update off even farther.
I'll, I'll break the news to her, Clarence.
Yeah, okay, that'll, uh...
I'll let her down softly, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Tell her not to be too much, too busy with her pit crew over Labor Day, and then she could... I'm, I'm awful tonight. Alright, if, if, well, if that's agreeable, everybody to put that off, because it makes, makes sense with the other presentation. Um, executive session, we'll move to executive session for, um, negotiations and, uh, personnel issues. Um, I will move that. Is there a second to the motion?
Can I add something to executive session?
Well, yeah, if it's proper for executive session, yes. What would you like added?
Um, I guess discussion of, I guess, kind of the janitorial changes that will be happening that we kind of mentioned earlier.
Personnel, we can talk about personnel if it involves names and things like that. We can do that in executive session. If it's something, more general, we'll have to do it in open session when we come back. One way or the other, Amanda, we can, it can be broached.
Okay.
I al, I also have a, a question based on something we saw in yesterday's meeting, um, concerning raises, um.
Yes.
So I'll, I'll last that during the session if that's okay.
Yep. Yep. Alright, is, uh, is there a second to the, the motion to exec, executive session for those reasons?
Yeah, I, I second it.
I'll second, it's a...
Eric, Eric. Eric seconded, that was fine, um. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?